Call the meeting of the Deerfield Elementary School Committee to order at seven o'clock. For the record, this meeting is being recorded. Well, I looked at my agenda, the first order of business, thank you, is reviewing the minutes from last month. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the minutes for September nineteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor? Five oh, okay, thank you. Next up we have a financial statement, and welcome Mike.
Thank you. Yes, so since the last meeting, we have processed eight warrants totaling one hundred fifty-seven thousand forty dollars and eighty-three cents. Shelley sent out expense reports earlier this week. I believe any overdrawn accounts have already been reviewed, but if there are any questions or something doesn't look familiar, I'm happy to take questions on that now.
That was me.
If you're done with Mike. If you guys are done with Mike.
Oh, yeah, unless you really want to hang out.
You know, as tempting as that is, I think I will take the exit.
I can't confirm, but I think. Okay, next, first question for.
All right, so while our grand opening was celebration was a success. It was wonderful to have the performances of the marching band and our red hot mascot showed up. I didn't know, so thank you whoever maybe Darius got it at. And it's so nice to welcome the students in a more safe and accessible entrance. We also had our first all-school meeting where many classrooms shared and had performances. And the diversity and leadership team introduced our first whole-school read aloud book, Amazing Grace, which ties into our October theme of identity. Now that all of our district assessments and screening tools have been. What's the word I'm looking for? Administrator, thanks. We have launched our first round of RTI, which is our Response to Intervention. They helped, that helps us to identify those struggling learners. And in our school, we have RTI for grades K through six. It focuses on math, reading, and social emotional development. Data is collected weekly on these, and we closely monitor students to for instructional adjustments. And RTI cycles are reviewed every six weeks to evaluate each student's progress. And RTI, we really strive for the, to strengthen the foundational skills and foster academic and social emotional growth and catch students early. Also, we recently, today, completed our first round of data meetings for the year at Deerfield. So three times a year, teachers meet by grade level with interventionists and special educators to review detailed data sheets. These data sheets include multiple data points like RTI, SST, attendance. Teachers bring in formative assessments to, this is guided by, our meetings are guided by Hattie's Ten Mind Frames and Visible Learning. This year, our primary focus is on math. It aligns with our new Bridges curriculum through the suns. We're making targeted adjustments that strengthen students' mathematical understanding. I've included a data on the next page, just a data meeting agenda, so you can kind of see what the process is that we follow. And then I thought it would be important to talk about Open Architect versus Data Chart. So you might remember that our, so one of the key recommendations that came out of the Equity Audit was to have a system that we could look at data efficiently. So to support this, the district has secured Open Architect, which is a robust management system. And you're not going to see how robust it is, but that little picture on the left will show you like some of the platforms on it. This is really exciting because the picture on the right is a look at our Excel sheets that we've been implementing on our own. So we take all that data and put them in an Excel sheet. So there was, I cut off student names on the other side. But we manually, right now, put data into an Excel sheet so that you can see where students are and color them, so we can analyze it visually. So we're excited to kind of dig in a little bit more this year. That'll be our work, looking into the Open Architect. And just so you're aware, on the other side is an overview of the assessments and screeners. I talk about it in the RTI, I didn't read it, but I talk about it in the RTI, just to give you an idea of what those screeners and assessment tools are that I refer to in the report.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There's no questions or comments? All right, next up, we have public comment. People who signed up, I think we'll just start with that, and then if anyone else, we can move on to them. So I'll just go in order of the names I have.
Hi, my name's Holly Johnson. I live in Weyybe, and I'm here representing the CPAC, the Special Education Parent Advisory Council for the district. And I'm here to oppose the changes to the, potential changes to the homeschooling policy. The responsibility of the CPAC is to advise the school committee on matters that pertain to the education safety of students with disabilities. So that's not just special education law, this is any matter, so that would include this policy that will affect disabled students in our community that are homeschooled or families who are considering homeschooling. There are many reasons a family decides to homeschool their disabled children. It can be hard to get our children the resources and individuals learning they need to thrive in school. Disabled children are also more likely to be bullied. There are bullying policies in place that are not always effective. In these cases, families choose to homeschool to keep their child safe. This proposed policy change could potentially force them to choose between safety and their child's desire to participate in school-sponsored activities, which are not just the sports at Frontier, but socializing in elementary schools, music, art programs, recess. There has been some discussion that homeschool families are not part of the district community. And I respectfully disagree. Legally, the school district has to approve and provide oversight of homeschooling with a focus on whether instruction and progress equals that to that in the public school. In addition, when a disabled student is homeschooled, the state still requires the district to provide evaluations and IEP services to those students. They are also included in the number of eligible special education students for federal funding. IEP students come to the school for services, including socialization. Whether they are enrolled in the school or not, all students, including homeschoolers, are a part of this community and deserve the opportunity to participate in these activities. Thank you.
My name's Mike Dodana from Deerfield. A father of two children, one is a special needs child who we homeschool, and the other attends the local school. It was suggested in the school committee meetings that homeschooled children may not be held to the same academic and behavioral standards as school kids. My homeschooled child gets up early, completes academic work every day, including reading, writing, math, and science. He has never made this much academic and social progress until we began the homeschool. It was not an easy decision, but it was a necessary decision. He did so well that we have continued to homeschool. He loves to be active in the community. He went to a school activity last week where he met a local author, read and ate pizza with other kids. He plays soccer and loves to run. I could see him joining a track team in the future. He attended math night and family night. He goes to the school playground and knows many of the kids. He is an active member of this community. There are potential extracurricular opportunities not even yet established in our district. Our family is working with Deerfield Elementary School to establish Best Buddies, which is a student-run club that creates one-to-one connection between students within and without disability. If our child was excluded, this opportunity would not be a current potential, and our community would lose the opportunity to be enriched by it. Our other child is enrolled at the local school. We have had to reach out numerous times to alert the school about behavioral concerns of other enrolled students, some of which were very upsetting. Most of these disrupted children participate in extracurricular activities. We have discussed the prospect of homeschooling her, so she may have a more productive academic life and a safer social experience. I don't know how I can justify to our homeschooled child that he can't participate even though he once did. My child will be affected by this policy, by this policy change, but the school did not alert me, involve me, or give me the opportunity to ask questions or have discussion. The district did not give any objective reasoning. We pay our taxes, we homeschool awfully, we receive permission and authorization from the superintendent. We meaningfully educate our child. My child is a well-behaved and now academically achieving homeschooled child. What part of our scenario warrants excluding him and limits his access to important opportunities? The Department of Education's website states, "The school board is a legal agent of the state and must therefore fulfill both state and federal mandates. At the same time, the board must be responsive to the community it serves. Homeschooled students are legally recognized by the state and certified by our superintendent. They are our community's children. I urge you to oppose this policy as the board works to fulfill its responsibilities to the community it serves. When weighing this policy out, it appears that it will hurt more children than be of benefit. I urge you to consider this and oppose this policy change." Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ashley. I'm a mother, I'm also a nurse in the community. I, I want the committee to know that a family informed me their student was told on three separate occasions this academic year that he could not participate in an extracurricular activity because he is homeschooled. This highlights a potential bias underlining this policy proposal and raises concerns to me about the ethical implications of school leaders practicing policies discretionarily. As the superintendent spoke of an us-versus-them mentality at the Frontier meeting, it became clear how our community is establishing a precedent for exclusion if we vote this in, if you vote this in, lacking diversity of thought and consideration for others as well as for community enrichment. As a family affected by this policy, we have taken our time to review the handbook and policies and the commitments of the district. My opinions are not meant to be nefarious. I want to share my informed reasons for opposing it. First, the district's justification has been minimal. And it also lacks the concrete, objective rationale needed to justify a drastic measure of full exclusion of an entire group of children whose parents are within their legal protection. Second, it negatively impacts a group of community's children, yet stakeholders in this decision were not made aware or invited to engage in discussion, most notably the CPAC. While CPAC is parent-led, it's district-required and set forth by the Department of Education with regulations mandating CPAC's participation in the development and evaluation of district initiatives that impact children with special needs, mine being one of them. There are current special education students who learning, whose learning needs do not, have not been fully met by the public school system, particularly those whose neurotypes do not align with a singular model. CPAC represents these children, and again, our child is one of them. Although we planned for our child to attend our town school, he faced significant challenges each year due to disability, despite the support of caring teachers and therapists. His progress was limited and bullying was a concern. Homeschooling was not our original plan, and it's not easy, but it was necessary, even with the special education support at school. Although my child is no longer enrolled in public school, the Massachusetts Department of Education still recognizes him as a lawful student. And our superintendent, our superintendent does certify that our home education plan is, quote-unquote, from the application, is equal to the education provided to students attending Frontier Regional in Union Thirty-Eight in thoroughness and efficacy. And moving forward with my points of opposition, the district did not explore less drastic alternatives or even proactive options that would better preserve our commitments and what this means for the stakeholders. I believe it's an extreme solution to a hypothetical problem. I was made aware that at the high school level, there are only two children who are currently receiving, who are participating in extracurriculars, who are homeschoolers. Both have met the standards and are authorized. In considering the speculation of unmet behavioral standards, we have a handbook that outlines a response in which the district makes case by case. Excluding an entire group grossly goes outside of the district's own behavior and disciplinary procedures. We have an equity, an equity commitment signed by our district in which we believe, part of it is, we believe in the importance of having accessibility on every level and every location to all students in our school community for equity inclusivity. While Frontier's committee discussion focused narrowly on high school sports, I want to highlight that extracurricular activities encompass a wide range of opportunities and not just at the high school level. They provide social engagement, teamwork, communication, emotional intelligence, and resilience, as well as skills essential for a future community. It leveled me to hear our kids, my kid, reduced to a homeschooler who is choosing à la carte options as if it were a rec department, suggesting that he is splintering the fabric of the district. I am hurt by this bias, and it doesn't describe our family, and it weaponizes extracurriculars for my child and others. We are a district who is turning towards inclusion, and yet this policy does not model this for our children. I would remind us that the Department of Education does not promote the exclusion of homeschoolers from extracurriculars, and thank you.
I don't know, if I can follow that up, she said pretty much everything that I needed to say. My name is Nancy, I'm a community member, and in my home, one child is enrolled in the district school and thriving, and one is special needs who is homeschooled. Both children are involved in the community in extracurricular activities. I oppose the policy change that will impact homeschooled children for many reasons. First, our homeschooled child is allowed to participate and has done nothing wrong, and there is no way to justify this change to him. Second, our family followed all the required steps to have the homeschool plan approved and authorized by the district. I oppose the change because it impacts children in the community, and there was no time or space created for prior discussion. I oppose this change because it goes against the district's signed commitment to equity. I oppose this change because no other alternatives were explored or discussed. I oppose this change because district-educated children who can't meet the academic and behavioral, behavioral standards go through a tiered approach to disciplinary actions and remedial opportunities. I oppose this change because there has not been any objective reason given. This leaves a lot of unanswered questions. Finally, I oppose this change because unjustified exclusion of a group of children feels discriminatory. Thank you.
Thank you for everyone for speaking and being here tonight with us, and we truly appreciate it. Okay, moving on to unfinished business, we're going to talk about policies. I think it makes sense for us to talk about the A group of policies and vote on those, then we can move on to the B group policy. Does that make sense? Anyone have any questions or comments on the A group, that those policies covering non-discrimination and harassment regarding sex and gender?
Does that include the new policy?
That's ACA, ACAa, ACAB, ACAR.
ACAa, yes.
Yes, yes.
I just wanted to refer to ACAa, page two, on transitions, names and pronouns in transitions. Is there, it's not clear what parental rights are within these two areas. I think some clarity there might be needed, specifically when we look at the last paragraph, or the last two paragraphs. Excuse me, the last paragraph, "Some transgender and gender non-conforming students are not openly so at home for reasons such as safety concerns or lack of acceptance." Here is where the school's action would then step in. "School personnel should speak with the student first before discussing a student's gender nonconformity or transgender status with the student's parent or guardian." And then, for some reasons, school personnel should discuss with the student how the school should refer to the student, e.g., appropriate pronoun use or written communication to student's parents or guardians. So in that section, I'm just not sure what the school's action plan is. So a student approaches the school, says, "I'm transitioning, but it's unsafe, I don't feel safe." To communicate this at home, what is the, is their notification still sent to homes at that point? I think that's not clear in the, the policy.
Good question. In the sense of it, the school doesn't want to be in a place between the family and the student, but it's going to support the student's decision. And I think it's also, if you're looking at a policy that's looking at, you know, pre-K to twelve, it's also going to be a difference of, you know, how old the child is. So, I mean, I think it's a good, a good point in the sense of, you know, we could probably get greater clarity within that. Do you have a spot, do you have any thoughts on that, having, at the elementary level?
Typically, we work with families around.
I was gonna say, most of the time, the families are part of that.
Yeah, they're part of the conversation.
But was it not, it's a good question.
It's a sensitive, that's a real sensitive moment right there. And I don't know if it's been, there's been an instance that here or in the district at large, but in preparation for such a moment, I think it's probably wise to look at what clearly is communicated with homes. And then, I mean, we know it's clear, the policy is clear about what the school will do to support the student, but at a certain point, I think that's just, how does that get sent home in those more delicate circumstances? So I'm not sure, being, being new, I'm not entirely sure about how the policy then gets, how we look at that change.
Right.
Should that get discussed?
I'm just thinking through what you're saying, and I'm wondering if it should be a policy or if it needs to be a part of this because this is about how the school supports the student and then that homeschool communication. By leaving out clarification, I wonder if it's okay to leave out clarification on that so that there's flexibility among grades and among, in terms of reading a situation around child safety. Because policies about homeschool communication, about personal things, is so delicate, I'm afraid that a policy might not capture everything that needs to be captured in an individual situation, and then I wouldn't want to be going against policy in one of those wild outlier situations. But I think that it should be thought about and practiced in advance. Like everything you said about advanced thought makes sense to me. Everything you said about how important it is to not be caught by surprise in a situation, but I just wonder if it needs to be a policy since this is about how we support students, not about homeschool communication.
Yeah, would, in that situation, would it fall more under whatever policies or practices you have in place regarding any situation where a student is struggling or you have concerns about what's going on at home, or a student has some kind of emotional thing they're dealing with? It, to me, it would be the same as anything like that, you'd be a judgment call and.
I think so.
They have, have a situation.
Deciding when to tell a parent that you're concerned about their, lots of things, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It said, this is Desi, saying, "When determining which of any staff or student should be informed or students generate any is different from assigned birth, decisions should be made in consultation with the student." Or in the case of a young student, the student's parent or guardian, but it doesn't say what a young, identifies as a young student. Question is whether or not, how sharing information will benefit the student. I mean, it gives an example, but the example's not super helpful.
I think this is such uncharted territory that, I mean, in thinking and reading the policy prior to the meeting and trying to think of examples that might be helpful guides, we don't necessarily have them. And so that's a challenge in and of itself. I guess I bring up the point because I, and Darius, you said it very well, we don't want to get in this back-and-forth situation. We want to support the student, but we also have a responsibility to not, we have to communicate to homes.
Yeah.
And so maybe the language looks something to the extent of, you know, that the school, you know, to the best of their, you know, legal responsibilities and ability, will work with homes during, you know, to communicate these, the support that's the child will receive. But again, if it's a really hostile home environment, it's, it's hard to say, so. But that's why I want to bring it up, because I don't know necessarily what the answer is for that case scenario that we're using here.
In those situations, I'm just thinking, like, the principal wouldn't be making that decision on their own. They would be talking to the psychologist or like an adjustment counselor, who's very trained in all of these things in terms of, like, assessing for home safety and what, you know, making that call. Like, so it would be, or an administrator making that decision in a vacuum. I don't know if it makes sense to clarify the role of a different school person to help make that call in conjunction with the student, but. Ultimately, is this a better policy than what was there before, I guess is the question, right? Like, is this something that can be revisited?
This is a new policy, it does not exist.
So we don't have anything now. So ultimately, this is still maybe better than having nothing at all, potentially a work in progress.
I mean, it's big, you know, I just had to read, you know, read this before I walked in the room again. So, you know, so I just kind of read through it again. But basically, you know, it's talking about working with the student throughout the process, you know. Schools will consult with the student before discussing a student's gender conformity or transgender status with the student's parent or guardian. So it's a, you know, it says that on page three. So, you know, it's talking about working with the student and through that, there's no, there's no emergency timing on that, you know. And so I think depending on the age of the student and the other factors that it'd be tough to put into a policy. It's not, it doesn't define it, I don't know if we need to define it, is what I'm kind of saying. It's saying that we're going to work with the student and so forth. And if the student has such a home life that they don't want to discuss it, do we rather than not be fearful of sharing that at school and creating a safe environment at school in fear that school has to tell their parents, if their parents, you know, if the school is working with them? You know, it's a tough call, but.
I think it's a tough call, and I stand in the, kind of in the side where we, the communication has to take place to the parent and the support has to be there for the student. And so it's, I was trying to thread that needle so that we're doing our due diligence on both sides. And so if somehow this could say, we, notification to parents is essential, that would be, that would do that because then everything else in there is supporting the student. So you're having, you're doing your due diligence from a parental responsibility standpoint, but then everything else is laid out for the student as well.
So if you want to, you can propose an amendment to the policy, which we could vote on. It would make us an outlier with the other schools that I think have so far voted.
Well, and I think, right, right, and the other layer in this, and I'm not saying you, you could also not vote the policy and ask for feedback would be probably more appropriate than amending the policy. Because this was put together by a group, as, you know, as I talked about the last meeting, a lot of hands touched this, including student, or student body reps from LGBTQ plus club, where they are looking at from their lens as well. For us to take it and make a significant change like that, I wouldn't want to get at least their feedback before switching it again on that kind of thing, because they had a hand in the development of the policy, as well as the people from the A and E committee who ever, you know, put on it. And they also see what the standard is, you know. I can get, you know, this went through legal, they didn't seem to have any problems with it, but we didn't ask that question.
If a student discloses sexual orientation to a teacher, there wouldn't be any feeling like we would need to reach out, and this feels the same policy, the same situation, unless. Unless it gets to a, a area, I mean, it's, it might be the child is not presenting as gender fluid or trans, except at school, and this is their space. I kind of see that just from a, the teaching perspective as that, it's not really much different than that.
All right, um, so maybe what we should do is, um, look to vote on that one first. Let me take the other ones as a group. Take some of them as a group, right? Vote on, when we're ready, vote on this one and then, vote on the other four.
But also know that the committee has to agree as well. So, you know what I mean? In the sense of, it's not to put against you, but you know what I mean? You're, you're looking for the change, and you guys have to agree that you want to do a change or you want to table it as a group.
Yeah, no, I'm just thinking logistically. We vote on this one, then we vote on five together.
Sure, yeah, I see, I see.
Just to, we don't have to vote on each of these individually, I don't think, unless there are other discussions.
I guess, I think that before that happens, I just want to say that, um, that some of the guidance that the A and E committee used to write this did come from the state. And the goal, i- i- in like, reading the text from the state is about how do we support students? It isn't guidance, they didn't offer guidance on home-school communication. And so, I do think that that's an incredibly important issue, but I don't know that it belongs in the document that's talking about how do we support students. I just want to be clear that not wanting to change this doesn't mean we don't want to think about home-school communication.
This, this does, though, handle that topic when we talk about communication with parents or guardians. When we, um, back to the, the section on transitions.
You mean the second paragraph?
Uh, in both, the, the, from the, from the bottom, the, the second from the bottom, and then the, the last paragraph. It, it does, it does discuss, um, how parents will be communicated with.
Well, right, so the school shall offer to hold a meeting with the student and the parents, i- if the, if the parents are involved in the process, to develop a transition plan so that the child's comfortable at school. And then, so that offer, that's like an offering process, not like a, not, not a notification, but to offer a support process so that nobody's alone trying to figure out how it's going to work. And then, in the second part, school personnel should speak with the student first before discussing the topic with the parents. In other words, letting the student know, "I'm going to be bringing this up with your parents," is what that says. So that the child isn't surprised that the parents have been informed. That's saying that we should let the student know that that's our line of communication before going directly to the parents without the student's knowledge. And so, I, I think that that's all about supporting the student and having a comfortable experience. But I don't, I don't think it says exactly, like, the thing that you were looking for is not in here. And I just keep wondering where does that kind of clarity belong? If, it's, you know, maybe in another document?
My thoughts are, I don't think I would like the policy to lay out specific when and why the parents are contacted. I think we should leave it to the schools to maintain flexibility on a case-by-case basis of how families contact us and when or if.
I would agree with that. I don't, I hate to tie, you know, or use the word like essential and really box, box it in because I think there are enough professionals and psychologists and school adjustment counselors, principals, all of you, that would, as a team, make a decision like that and help, help in supporting the student.
And Desi, actually, reading on, um, "Some trans, transgender and gender nonconforming students are not openly, are not open, so, are not openly so at home for reasons such as safety concerns or lack of acceptance. School personnel should speak to students first before discussing to the student's gender, nonconformity, and transitions, transgender status with the student's parents or guardian. For the same reason, school personnel should discuss with the student how the school should refer to the student, e.g., appropriate pronoun use, and in written communication with the student's parent or guardian." So, they leave it completely up to...
You just lifted it right from Desi.
From Desi, so they're saying, no, they're saying it goes right. We fortunately have not had that issue where we've had to work with families, but, um, they're saying it's in power of the students.
And, so, we can make a motion to make an amendment to the policy?
You can do that, yes. Would you like to do that? Or should I look for a motion for approving the policy? I don't want to rush you.
Uh, I would like to make a motion that we table ACAA for further review of parental communication surrounding transitions. Just because we don't have the necessarily, the case studies, because it's just a lot we don't know. And that's, I know it's a hot-button issue, and I, and I don't mean to slow down the policy train that we have. We have some good stuff, but that's just an oversight that, whether it belongs here or somewhere, it's, it feels essential to this process.
Is there a second to the motions? If there's no second, the motion does not pass, and we move forward to the backseat, original motion. Further thoughts? Okay, then I would be looking for a motion to approve policy ACAA. A motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Four, all against? Thank you, the motion passes, four to one.
You probably should just do them all.
Alrighty. You ready to start typing?
Yeah.
All right. Would anybody like to, motion to approve policy ACA?
Move to approve.
Any discussion on that one? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries five oh.
Motion to approve policy ACA, maybe?
Mary, second? Does anyone have a question on that one? All in favor, all succeed. Motion carries five oh.
Motion to approve ACA dash R.
Second.
All in favor?
And motion to approve AC dash R.
Second.
I'm on a, I'm on a roll.
It's a good pattern, Mary.
Makes it easier to note, I think.
All right, all in favor? Five oh, all right, thank you. Okay, that, I think that got us, you guys got us to one, two, three, four, all the As, all right. Okay, uh, now I'd like to move on to policy IHBG, which is the proposed changes to, uh, homeschooling involvement extracurriculars. Uh, I would just like to note that Frontier voted on this on Tuesday, and after a robust discussion, uh, they voted down the policies change, so they voted no on that. So, in the interest of keeping policies across the district, and this affects Deerfield's and Frontier, so I think it makes sense to. I would personally also vote no for this policy. I would like to open further discussion.
I have a, oh, go ahead.
I just have some... Rock tape, is it?
Oh, yeah, okay. How many, so I just, we might have to, um, how many homeschoolers do we have in the district? Twenty-five. Twenty-five for the whole district?
No, that's twenty-five for Frontier. Deerfield has, you know, it's in my other folder.
That's okay.
But, uh, Frontier is twenty-five. Deerfield has like sixteen, I think. I'm going off of memory on that. Let me see if the, let me see if the digital copy's on there.
That's not families, that's students.
Yes, correct.
Students, not families.
And for DES, what, um, how many of those students have IEPs or 504s? Is that data we have access to?
We don't have that data. We only have those who are using services. Unless, there's, there are many, there are some families that have never stepped foot in the building because we don't even know, um, again, if they have an education plan or that kind of thing. So, it would only be those receiving services. And I don't have that number in front of me. I can get it.
That's okay.
I would like that, I think, maybe after the meeting, if Frontier, you could let us know that.
Actually, I mean, Tina, Tina will know, we're providing services to.
One homeschool student that we are providing services to.
One of sixteen.
Can you define extracurricular? Because I feel like I'm, I, I'm really, like, I am carrying, like, sports and, like, club and drama, but then, like, things like music and band, like, so I'm, I'm, because I thought those were part of the school day, so, okay.
Extracurriculars, events that happen outside the school hours, they're sponsored by school.
Okay, so that's what we're talking about, when we're talking about extracurriculars outside of school hours? So, we're not talking about band or art or, like, an art class, like, a specific art class?
That's part of your, that's part of the academic...
That's part of the school day, okay.
Co-curricular instead of extracurricular.
Co-curricular, thank you.
So, the policy says, uh, not be eligible to participate in intrascholastic athletic programs, student government, and student activity program. Uh, what is there available at elementary school? What is, is there anything that is actually...
There's nothing currently excluded here. There was concern about what about future, if we would be able to have after school. Let's say, we'll just, we created a basketball team, there was Deerfield Elementary Basketball Team instead of the rec program. That would be, if we did that in the future, that would, you know, this policy would limit those students.
So, for students who are non-504 IEP, if they want to access something like gym or art or band, like a one-class here and there kind of thing, is, is there a process to ask for that? Or is it kind of, if, if you have an IEP, then that could be part of the IEP team process?
They would have to request that through, I mean...
Okay, so there is, so that's, but that's separate than extracurriculars, that's co-curriculars?
Separate from extracurriculars.
What about a program like Girls on the Run?
It's not run by the school directly. It's run by parent organization. Right, is it parent organization?
With Girl Scouts, yeah.
The Girl Scouts, so.
But it's housed on, it's, it's going on.
So, yeah, things are, things happen on campus, but it's not run by, you know, it's a lot like all the, uh, re, again, looking at the sports, with the recreation sports that are housed here, basketball leagues, all that stuff. All the announcements go through the school system, but it's run by Deerfield Rec, and private school students are playing and that kind of stuff.
Anyone has access to it?
Anybody who lives in town. And they allow, um, school choice, um, for rec programs.
For the rec program, I think they pay, if you're not a Deerfield resident, I think they pay a little more. But yes, they are allowed.
If there's, they're always that happy. I'm waiting to say that out there, but.
True, this is true. Okay, if there's no further discussion?
I would just like to add, so, there were a lot of emails that were sent and communications that went out over this process. And, um, it's been a pleasure to hear from the community in such a robust way. The emails were thoughtful but respectful. At no point did it become, uh, at least from where I sit, um, hostile. And I, I'm just grateful for the community to be able to come out in this way and support their children, their students. Uh, and, uh, and I, I've learned a lot through this, but at the same time, I also just want to reiterate that, um, this, this, um, I, I stand with the, the homeschool parents and with the decision to align with Frontier, so.
I would just like to say, I, um, actually thank Darius for bringing this forward with the intent that you did. It's, it's, um, we heard at Frontier the other night, his perspective on the, on the equity and fairness for all students, and defining who is in our school community, that kind of thing, which made a lot of sense. And, you know, we, I thought about some things that I hadn't thought of from my perspective. You know, I don't want to exclude any child, um, but you brought up some excellent points that I probably hadn't thought of. So, I, I applaud you for bringing it forth. You saw some, you know, maybe unfairness, inequities for all the students, things that ought to be reviewed and just talked about. And I think that certainly has happened. We had great conversation with some of the, some of the same folks the other night, so. I think it's been a good thing as well.
I agree, Mary. I think there are, uh, things that, that just exactly made things that could be changed. Um, and this is a good conversation to be having.
Where, so, is there, um, I don't know what our, what our vote is going to be? If we, like, vote on this policy or if we table it as a result of? My understanding is Frontier is taking it back to their policy subcommittee, is that right?
They voted no.
Oh.
And it will be, uh, in the future, we'll do that policy.
Okay, so it's possible we will sort of be revisiting this in a different capacity once that other policy comes out?
So, do we make a motion and vote on it, or do we withdraw it?
You can go do it either way. So, it's not a new policy or amending a policy. So, by, if you table it, um, you would refer to the old policy. If you vote it down, it goes to the old policy. I recommend voting it down. It's a little cleaner than having something on a table that's sitting up there. You're, you're kind of saying that you want it to go back and be revised based on...
By voting it down.
I think it's a little cleaner, in my, my opinion. Although we were just at Sunderland and they chose the old opposite way to do it.
For what reason?
Just because of the, I'll never put it on the agenda, so don't worry about it. You know, it was kind of that. So, it was like, okay, have no one the other, but it is technically tabled. It could be untabled at any time. So, I think it's, it's just cleaner to say, you know what? It's, we, we don't like the way it currently is, and, um, we disagree. If the subcommittee, so you're a member, you, you're, we write policies as a five school district, so, um, your membership will be on the policy subcommittee. Because when we reviewed all the policies, when this one came up, it was part of the policy subcommittee. So, we're, forget who's on, just get where you're... So, we will have a meeting, you know, to review policy, and this will be on the agenda. Ideas therefore, we'll take it up or not. You know what I mean? If the policy's up, you can say, no, it's, it's working fine, or, or, you have to have, um, procedures that are different than the policy, right? So, you know, what does the, that kind of thing?
Do, do you feel, Darius, that there's a need to keep this discussion open to, um, to hash out some of the points that Mary talked about in terms of, um, you know, what, some of the thinking that brought the changes from the first place in terms of, of what kind of...
I think what, I think what ended up, Frontier ended up saying is that, exactly that, that there are, that they disagreed with the, um, with the, well, with the... There were a lot of different opinions that came up with it, but, um, in the end, they disagreed with the language, the new language that was proposed. But they did say that there's, there is an issue of, um, that things could be done to, to solve some of those concerns of inequity amongst public school students versus home-school students. So, and then perhaps they could either put language into the policy or create something to go with the policy, I think is, and Mary, is that sound all right?
So, um, I don't want to make a motion to approve it because I don't approve it. Can I make an emotion to not approve?
That's what I, that's what I said. Did I say that wrong?
No, but I thought you said...
I would either vote it down...
Someone has to make a motion to approve it.
Make a motion and then we'll vote it down.
Make a motion to vote it down.
But I don't want to use the word approve in my motion.
Can you move to, to vote, to not, not, to vote no?
Okay.
I guess you're right.
Make a motion to discard the policy?
No, that's all right. I'll, I'll do it. I move to approve policy IHBG.
Oh, it's less a second. Oh, Mary, I got you. I'm already on the second train, so, okay.
Already, thank you for your...
This is hilarious. I think he's...
So, now we just vote it down?
Just vote it down.
We get the idea, we get the idea.
Can we state it for clarification purposes, though?
Uh, so I will ask for votes of all in favor of the motion, is that what you mean? So I will ask for votes of all in favor of the motion, is that what you mean?
Yeah.
Just what Mary's motion was, so, because there's a lot of crosstalk.
She made a motion to approve policy I H B G.
I seconded, so we can bring it to a vote.
Mary, you're right, you should just remove it from the table. You shouldn't make a motion. You should just remove it from the table. That's how Robert's rules of work. You wouldn't take action on it, and it would die. Yeah, because, because I don't believe you can move a motion and then vote against it.
Why not?
For some reason, my gut says you don't want to do that. I don't have a.
Do I actually make a motion to remove it?
Yeah. A motion to table, is that tabling now, which you were trying to avoid?
You can actually just take no action on it, and it dies that way, too.
Oh, so no one makes no action.
It just like, there was an amendment that didn't go, you just say, if no one, if no one brings it forward, it dies.
Well, I think there's like a symbolic. If we.
I think there's a symbol that's to voting, but.
I, I think you would have to retract your motion. There's a motion on the table right now, okay.
No, you don't have to approve a motion to move it in Robert's rules of order, so. Sorry, I screwed up the. It says, no, you do not have to approve a motion to move it in Robert's rules of order. So you can, you can shoot it down.
But it's been, it's to be dropped. I, I think we could, if, I will call for a motion and no one will make a motion. Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve policy I H B G?
No.
Okay, no motion. All right. So it's off of our table. Okay. All right, moving on. Thank you, everyone.
All right, new business, capital planning update.
All righty, so. I shared with you today the PDF or the, what's on the board here, so that you can kind of look through, but. No, we're not sending, we are here. So again, an ongoing list of all the things for those who, this is the first time seeing it. We kind of show everything in gray what we've completed through the past three years. And you can read through the notes of how things were funded and what things cost, so you can get an idea of the amount of improvements we've done in the school in the past, basically since we started this doc in my first year of superintendent, so the past seven years. But what was, the things that are still in progress, in progress may also mean that we didn't pay the bill yet, which would be in the case for the entry project, we haven't paid the bill yet. And the side entrance project, we're waiting on the addition of a handicap accessible ramp to be added on. So, and then the playground engineering, I don't think we haven't paid the bill yet. So, basically, the last few years, we've had, we use some school choice money, we've used some ARPA money, we've used some grant money, and we use some ESSR money to take care of a lot of different things around the building. So we've done a lot the last few years. Looking ahead, we started calling ones in one B, meaning that the one B is like, if we can get funding elsewhere, we're not going to look to go to the town as part of the capital this year, but one B is like, it's on our radar, and we might find another way to pay for it. And, you know, we, I'll go to one Bs first, the replacement of the convention steamer, convection steamer rather. You guys remember Shelly was at the last meeting, and she talked about how our lunch proceeds are a little bit high, and our collections are a little high, that we're going to have to spend some of that down. So we may be able to pay for that steamer, we got to buy lunch things with those funds. We may be able to buy a new convection steamer with those funds, so it's on our capital list, but it's not something that we're going to go look at for funding for. Hallway painting could be done in phases, you know, we're talking about, you know, doing, you've seen in the front entryway how wonderful that's kind of, Tina wants to continue that throughout the building, you can jump in if I miss a picture. But we also could do that in phases with some end of year money, so the whole thing would cost about twenty-five. That's a round number that we threw at it based on, you know, the other kind of, the other painting we've done, but that can be broken up into parts to a wing at a time to five thousand or seven thousand dollars.
Just to jump in, it's not just murals, it's just repainting.
Right. But I was thinking about how nice it looks like.
Yeah, no, yeah, Catherine or our teacher does some of the murals.
All right, so you're saying, she didn't sign up to do the whole building?
She did not sign up for that. I don't think I have the skill, but I would try.
We're going to ask her, but she didn't sign up. All right. So the things that are ones, there are two that are very clearly we can, we could probably go after from the town. The first one being, so our, so we have boilers that have been replaced recently. The boilers also have pumps that pump the water from the boiler throughout the building. The, both of them are at thirty years old, and the parts for them are obsolete. And the idea is to replace one each year for the next two years, so that they'll get those up to speed, so that if one goes down, and they always go down when it's freezing out, it's probably because there's probably a greater strain on them. We're doing the same thing up at Conway as well, actually, they did an emergency ward because one of theirs broke, they couldn't get parts. This is why it's on our radar here, and the second one started leaking. And so we did actually an emergency ward and a select board up there to get, to get a new circular pump. Because they're all at the same age, it's the only thing nice about everybody being the same age, we're getting to the same problems at the same time. So we're looking to do that. The second thing is to continue our flooring. And, and Laura said she had enough, she left. Is this? I'm going to see if I can get the maps. Where's another access, do you have?
To the maps?
So basically, going back to.
I'm on a PDF version.
I was trying to show the flooring map, but it's not. The, oh, because I'm in this. Yeah. What's that?
Are you on the PDF? Because I'm on a PDF.
No, I was on the live one, it wouldn't open it up. So anyways, the, we basically are doing, like, three classrooms a year. We've been making our way through the building. A, one, two, and six would be the next one on the map.
I'm trying.
For some reason, I didn't know that. So that would be the other one that we bring forward. The big thing that's left over is that parking lot across the street is in, is getting worse and worse every year. It's the same problem, it's probably the same kind of disrepair as Frontier's is. The good news is there are less structural issues than what Frontier has, but it's the town's parking lot. So really, the question is whether or not, we should probably have a conversation with the select board, whether or not the select board wants to go through for funding for that, or does the school go through funding to try funding to pay for the school parking lot? And the reason why it's slightly different is, for the most part, yeah, but how, can you share with me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right, that's not right.
Thank you. The, so the question is whether or not we should just ask the town to put it on their list, and they, they fund, they come up with that time, because basically, the way, it has worked, the school's taking care of everything, the school, the town plows it, the town takes care of the potholes, we don't even have to request it, they've been very good about staying on top of it, for the most part. And so the question, but it is under our kind of purview, so that's kind of in our conversation tonight as well. So, and then as soon as I get the thing, I'll show you the map, so you can have an idea of the floor, who we are on the floor. Questions on what I shared?
I just wanted to share something about the parking lot and sidewalk. I myself have almost broken a bone getting through that parking lot, just kind of like twisting ankles. I'm a little clumsy, so I realize that might not be, but I have seen other small children, like, really wipe out, pretty, like, bloody wipeouts walking to school, because it is a little treacherous, and then, like, the sidewalk area, it is even more treacherous. There's, like, huge divots, and there's, like, a lip between where the sidewalk is and then to the grass, so, like, and there's tons of traffic, you know, crowded, kind of going to and from, so it's, it's.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Does the two hundred and ninety-six thousand cover just repaving the existing parking lot and sidewalks in the exact same layout? Would that involve any changes?
Same layout, that is actually exactly that, it's not changing anything. It's, the quote was made by basically having coming in, looking at the amount of asphalt that's needed in the general costs of ripping up and putting down. So that's an envelope number, we'd have to obviously put it out to bid, even depending on the price of asphalt and contractors that year, that number would go up or down. But, so that would be our starting number. Usually, it's conservative, so we'd probably be able to get a pricing less than that. Just because we're bouncing around so well together here. The gray area is the area that's been completed, and then yellow is installed, is what we're proposing, no, which was installed.
Yellow happened this year.
It happened this year, purple the following year, so you can see, we're getting pretty close. We're getting pretty close to finishing the building.
Any questions?
So I guess, well, within the conversation, you do need to kind of talk about, do you want me to reach out to the select board and talk to them about the parking lot and directly say, do we want to put this on the town capital list instead of the school capital list? Because it's a major expense. And we're going to, and we're going to talk about the playground in a minute, which is another major expense, which we're going to go into town for, too. And that's been the problem with parking lots, both that Frontier and here, where, I'll be honest, it's not my priority. I'm sorry, tripped and fell.
Wow, the playground, if we get a playground out.
You know, it's like, well, I guess. Yeah, it's like, do playground or parking lot? I'm going to pick the playground. Tennis courts and the parking lot, I'm going to pick the tennis courts, you know what I mean, like, so, you know, unfortunately, that's how I, that's why Frontier's gotten really bad, because it's just, it's a, Frontier's like a million dollar job. Like, it's going to freeze everything else, and it was necessary eventually to get to it, but that's why I was kind of going after program things first, because, you know, kids' programming is first in my mind, but eventually, parking lots aren't sexy, they got to eventually get them. And same thing with roofs, roofs aren't sexy, aren't sexy either, they have to get done. Unless you're a roofer, then you think roofs are amazing, but, yeah.
What is your sense of, are there different funding sources available, if it goes through the?
So the question is whether or not they can use chapter ninety money for a parking lot. I don't know what the rules are on that, but they get different funding from the state. And that's why it would be good, because if we do it through the town, I think we strongly recommend that you tell me to go, to ask, talk to the select board about this, because the town also could do it themselves, right? And so with that, they could do it, if the highway department does it, they can do it far cheaper, they can put it in for another job, they can put it into their bidding at the beginning of the season, where they, basically, you put a bid, how much road you're going to do, and somebody bids the amount of roads, so they can get a lower price on asphalt. They could maybe somehow do this. So there's other things that they can do that we can't do. We would have to go out to, you know, a contractor, that kind of stuff. And, and I don't know what's in their queue for town projects in the sense of, and they only can do so much. As you saw with the sidewalks, they contracted out for part of it, they did part of it, so.
Do you need a motion, Darius?
No, just conversations.
As much as I'd like to get a print for a redesign over there and think about traffic flow, with everything else on the docket, it seems like that's, does have to go to the bottom of the, of the list. And so I would, you know, recommend that we look at, see if the town could, you know, help cover the cost or handle the project.
The amount of use that parking lot gets from nothing to do with the elementary school is pretty significant.
That's really true.
So, it was completely full in town meeting alone, so in school football, I mean, any time that gate is open, the parking lot is.
Well, during town meeting, there was the boys soccer game. It was a, it was a big one. It was funny, I love town meeting, I walked out there and there were seven hundred people there. It was, they were playing.
But it was regularly full on the weekends.
Yeah, you're right, absolutely.
Darius, who funded the, when the, when the walkway was refinished six years ago?
They used ARPA money, they used their COVID money, because, and they were able to justify that because they had to have their meeting outside. And so they used, they paved the whole, thank you to the town of Deerfield, they paved the whole walkway from the back of Frontier to the stadium, so to speak, was paved using that money, because they need to be able to get, you know, you know, folks with mobility issues to the, because they had it, the first one on the football field, and they were like, oh, we're not walking out there all the way. So the second time, they had it right on, right behind the building, but they, they justified that money there, so. Okay, thank you, because I want to get moving on that, to put it on their list. While it may not happen this year, you want to get it on this year.
Thank you for taking that to town. Anything else we need to cover here?
Playground renovation. So, we, so our, I think we took a, this group took a tour of the playground last fall, last fall, last spring. Were you a part of that?
Fall, it was fall.
Was it last fall? So, so I'm going to, right now, what's happening is that, so we went and used a blue school choice money to pay for Berkshire Design to come up with new schemes to make our playgrounds more handicap accessible. In the pre-K, in the K four playground, and that's the playground, when you face the building on the left-hand side. The structure in the K four playground, the big one, is still in great shape, it's only nine years old. But the ground is washed out, they didn't put in proper drainage when they, when they did it originally. The poor and play is covered with wood chips, and the design of it has wood chips on both sides of a poor and play with kids running back and forth. So even if you go out below and sweep it at the falling recess, again, anybody who's in a wheelchair or that kind of thing, it's impossible to get through. The washout has created, if you haven't walked out there, you be careful, but the, the poor and play surface has sunken in. We probably can do some repairs to bring that up, like, cut holes in it, put sand in, we could do something like that in a different playground, but overall, and there's a lack of ADA accessible, accessible devices on that playground. So with that in mind, we contacted Berkshire Design and had them give us some layouts, so I'm going to share those on the screen here. We have a subcommittee that's working on this, made up of teachers and Annie. Really hard to see on this, but let me try to orchestrate this for you. This is the, has everybody been on the playground? Well, you can say it really confidently, but this is the, if you walked out this doorway and walked straight out the door, it'll take you out here. And you would walk straight out, and this is the softball, the baseball fields, softball fields way out there, the big ditch, wetland, storm basin is through here, the basketball courts are over here, and this is the big play structure right here. All right, so the idea is to put in, poor and play the whole thing. Right now, using wood chips and such is, every year, we have spent thousands of dollars to bring this up in. We're supposed to have one foot of wood chips under fallible structures, keeping that there after it's been knocked away by swings, kids doing that kind of stuff. It's a constant, it's a constant mess. So it's to do poor and play through the whole thing, add a handicap accessible, wheelchair acceptable, accessible play structure. This is adding a new climber structure and remove the individual one that's out there, the little pod that's nice. It's kind of like, it's, it's one that's like single use, and then moving the current kind of diamond climbing structure over. So that is the current, so what we did is we divided this project into two parts, the K to, K to four playground, which is this one, which we think is first in line, and then the pre-K, so just talking about the K to four one. And then. This is the other side of that map. Just so you know what I, why I struggle over here is that you presented, but it's, I can't touch it on screen. Anyway, this is the edge of that, the big play structure, these are the basketball courts. Repaving those, if you ever walk on those now, it's covered with small stones that get dragged in from the side. And when, you know, kids obviously are falling and that kind of stuff, and can dribble basketball without having stones stuck to it. So, um, repaving this, and then, we have an adult, I'll show you some numbers in a minute, but this is the current swing set. Again, keeping the structure, but putting, um, pour and play. This is all within the Wetland area. The entire playground is in the Wetland area, so we're gonna have to go to conservation, um, to get, um, allowance to do work within the Wetland area. The Wetland area actually comes right up this line here, almost up to the side of the building, within a foot or two of the side of the building, so, um, it's okay to do things within the Wetland area, especially if you're doing improvements, so, um, and you're not changing, we're not changing our footprint, so it shouldn't be a problem, but there is a series of steps that we're gonna have to go through with the town, and then also with the state, um, because anytime you're doing that kind of thing in Wetland area, they may have, um, a state agency look at our prints as well. Okay? Questions on what we're putting together? So right now, the, I asked, didn't even look to see if there was a question, kept on talking, excuse me. We have a subcommittee that's looking at this, and, um, right now, getting feedback, if there's any changes, and we have a meeting next week, so, it could be slight changes, but I want to give you an update where it's at. And the reason why is that we want to look at CPA money, um, for recreation, um, to pay for the majority of this project. And the question is, and we're working on, like, can we get donations, um, what is the realistic of that? The school budget, um, bringing a little bit tighter school budget this year, and we're gonna be more and more careful with school choice, so we don't want to throw it just at that as the answer. This playground is the only playground in town for that age group, and, um, when the other playground fell apart, that they were gonna put together next to Frontier, um, I think it's time, we can, I think it's a fair to say that we can go back to the CPA, not back, but, um, go with, again, another playground idea, um, to fund it. It's used all weekend long, um, anytime you drive by on a weekend or a nice day, there's cars parked out, people are using it. In the other, and I'm gonna go back to, back to the other way out. The other part is, so we have this broken up into sections, so whether or not we break it up into sections is one of the decisions we have to make, but the other part is the elementary, the preschool playground. Again, if you haven't been to it, so you know, you walk up the walkways, the first playground, there's like a, there's like a shed right here, sandbox right there, but basically, the majority of those play structures are well out of date. Excuse me, the main play structure is falling apart, um, you know, we've had to rebolt it, it's starting to rust, you know, it, it's, it's, it's starting to fail, especially for that, um, age group. So, the idea is to put in a lot of new pieces, except the swing set is still in good shape, um, and, um, put in all, again, pour and play surfaces, right there. Right now, any preschool with mobility issues doesn't really have a playground. They can access the area over here, off this walkway, through here, it's, it's a dirt ground, not great. Um, staff members will try to get them two different objects, they can't do, do so unassisted. So, the, this plan here would have, you know, being able to roll, be able to roll out here, uh, ramp down into the playground area, and have access to all, all, um, pieces. So, um, again, those pieces are being reviewed and such by the, our subcommittee, um, and so we'll have an idea. Let me share the, um, the, the hard part, right? Because being cheap. Why is it two? So, we basically had it broken up into three parts. Um, the first one that you're seeing there is, um, the pre-K playground, and as you can see, for some reason, everything's a little slow, you're looking at a three hundred thousand dollar cost. We've already, our sub, our, our group has already, our subcommittee's already talked, started to reach out, and the town might be able to help us with removal, so we're, you have to be, these numbers will come down, but you can see where the costs are in the preschool, the play equipment at a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And that's, that's a number that's gonna be tough to move. Um, we can remove some of the play structures, and then you have the rubber playing surface at eighty thousand dollars. Those are the big costs of the thing, everything else, you know, bidding and, and, you know, removal and that kind of thing can go, can move around. But, you're looking at those other two numbers, um, even though the rubberized surface, we did Conway at sixteen per square foot. If you haven't been to Conway's playground, take a drive up there with your kids, if you got little ones, um, because that's kind of the idea that we're trying to replicate down here. They were able to get it for sixteen, the number's gone up to twenty, since it can come back down, so, there may be thousands of savings there, but, um, as you see, it's a very big price tag. The, you called it the one to six playground, but it's a one to four playground, again, you're looking at a number that is at three sixty, three eighty-six, with a much higher number for rubberized service, because of the amount of it. And, the new play equipment, so, that play equipment is extremely expensive. It, I made a joke, and it's probably not funny, but I could park my truck out there and have the kids play on it for us, um, with the music going, you know? It'd be, uh, the structure, the ADA structure, the play equipment, is eighty-five thousand dollars. Um, the second structure is the difference, um, of that, in the, whether or not we keep that structure in there is one of the discussions the subcommittees have to make, because you, you start with what you want, and then you have to reduce to, um, what you can afford. And then the third area we, we, we broke out would be whether or not the swings and basketball court would be an all-add-on. Again, the rubberized surface is, you know, a lot cheaper, obviously, just under that particular swing set, with fourteen hundred square feet, um, at twenty-eight thousand, you know, and, um, again, asphalt maybe at ten thousand, if we had the town involved with this, that number, this particular one could come way down, because they could actually asphalt that, very easily do the, uh, basketball court and the walk-around to it, so. So, the whole, total of the whole cost of the project, um, on the high end, is just under nine hundred thousand dollars. Realistically, given where CPA just, um, you know, just made a big movement to, you did do the eighteen eighty-eight building, and is also using money, or they use the money to purchase, I don't know if they're putting more money into the senior, um, area as well. The idea is to write up our proposal and then have a conversation with CPA about how do we go about requesting that money? You know, how do we, because I asked them, do they want it well in advance, so they can plan multi-year in a row, and they not set up that way, so, I want to be able to request the entire amount, and then go in and have a conversation that says, we can break this in parts, we can cut this down, like, where, with the appetite of which they, where they want to go. But, that's where we're at. Exciting, right? Daunting.
Can you talk about the benefits of doing it all at once versus splitting it up?
Yeah, so if you do it all at once, you're probably gonna get a much lower bid, um, because someone who's gonna come in and set up for asphalt sets up once, whoever's coming in for the pour and play is gonna set up once. For contractors, it's a big part of it, is that a lot of their, a lot of their fee is, um, their labor is the setup and breakdown of whatever machinery they bring in. So, uh, however, if we get the town to do the demolition, um, you know, that might, there may not be as much saving for the setup and breakdown, the town does the demolition and the asphalt. Because I also think they could do the asphalt and the basketball court, you know? But, you know, I think the saving might be, is definitely worth it versus, you know, we're juggling, getting different groups to coordinate to get the job done will be more difficult, but, um, I think realistically, to get through a price tag that's that high, that makes more sense.
Are you looking for any guidance from us right now, or?
No, it's an update, so, the reason, the only thing that is also, um, untimely is that, that you know that it's, we're going this route, in that I am going to be making a request to the CPA, or they go by CPC, CPIC. Each town calls CPA money differently, and the committee that oversees it, um, but I'm gonna be making a request from the sub, after our subcommittee meeting, to the town, this due to November first. So I'm gonna be doing it on behalf of the school committee, that we're gonna be putting some kind of package together. And I want to do it in a way that says, this is the full project, we can break it into parts, we want to have a conversation about it. I think it's, I think it's a, a fair way to do, to approach it, then, if we go in, if we go in with a million, they're, they don't have the money. I think they're only at a nine hundred thousand right now. It's gonna, they're gonna get another five hundred thousand next year, they get about that much a year, so, will we, they'll have more than enough by the time the project needs to be funded, but, um, I don't know, there's a lot of projects out there right now, and then they would have to go to town meeting as well. So, doing it in parts might be more attractive that way, but if you do one part, then it loses momentum, and it's, it's the size there, or moment, or support from town, they do not one, but two, you know, that kind of thing, so. Yeah, so I guess it's kind of an FBI, that ideally, you would have another school committee where you would vote to approve what we're putting forward, so I'll send you a copy of every material, so you are aware of what's going on, but there's no, um, and we'll talk about November meeting.
Darius, we, there were some side conversations about private fundraising. What, has, has the district, and Tina, thank you, Tina shared some previous private support that DES has received. Has the district, do we have any data that would be helpful for that planning for a fundraising campaign, that, that we could use to? Because the challenge that we have is, since we don't have a lot in terms of like a spreadsheet of, these are the folks who support us, or have in the past, being able to determine what could be fundraised, and I know that would be helpful for your, your, your case with, you know, in the community. I just, I, I hesitate to say, a certain number could be fundraised without having any backup data?
No, we don't have a database or a good way of tracking what's been donated by whomever, and, you know, that's the one thing I've always, you know, I work in private schools as well, they do that very well, you know what I mean? I think, you know, Deerfield Academy has more people on alumni relations and donations, and I have administrators in our district, you know what I mean, so they got, they, you know, there's a, if you have a lot of resources for that, you can develop those plans. And, um, other people are going to people, other people all the time for money, right? And so, if Frontier's doing something, you know, they're going to your, you know, the Polish club has been very generous to things, you know, the, you know, other kind of, um, you know, institutions in town. And I had a short conversation with, um, select board member regarding, um, you know, should we go after Deerfield Academy? Or, the other private institutions in town about maybe donating a portion of this there. But it really should be planned out, because it's a big, it should be discussions with the town, because they're having conversations with SURE, and they're having conversations with everything, there really should be a planned ask, and, when I look at Deerfield Academy, they should be giving a continual donation to the elementary school, for the amount of students we serve. And so, those kind of conversations really should be more coordinated than, sure, you know, we'll give you fifty thousand dollars, we're that number, you know, that, we'll take it, right? And then, fundraising, I question whether or not the school playground needs to have fifty thousand dollars of parent fundraising when we pay CPA taxes. Is, is my kind of, you know, so, we've done two playgrounds, um, in our district already, um, Conway did it, and Sunderland did it. So, Sunderland did a, a pre-K playground, that's the one right in front of the building, if you ever pull in there, um, they did pour and play, it's, you know, it's different areas. It took them about seven years to get the project done. They, you know, took donations for everything, and it was a labor of love, and Ben Barshevsky, who lives in town here, that's often his principal, he did all that, year after year, getting different people to sign on, and eventually, they were able to get, I think they used CPA money, um, to pay for it. Conway had the idea, and then they had a, uh, someone in town made a donation to town for the betterment of people with disabilities, and they were able to get a big chunk of that, and I believe some CPA money, and they paid for it all at once, and just got it done. Um, it was, I mean, it's a lot clearer, a lot easier, obviously. So, I, I, I know we're supposed to talk about fundraising, because, um, talk about that, but I, I, I worry, I don't want to do bake sales for a playground, you know what I mean? Like, bake sales should be for, you know, smaller events, the smaller kind of up things, and, or go to the pizzeria in town, and ask for money, you know what I mean? Like, I think this is a lot of money, um, and whatever we do, the CPA's gonna want to see what are we providing on our end, um, as part of their application. I don't know, I, I, I'm taking feedback on it, it's.
Yeah, no, you know, I, I, I would, we don't want to be knocking door to door, collecting dollar, dollars for this project, you know, a structured capital campaign of sorts is what you really are looking for, it's just a matter of what scale.
Yeah.
And what we could pull off. Um, the dollars are definitely there, it's just a matter of, you know, identifying, uh, who has the, who, who would like to support this project. It, it, it's a good project.
Right.
And, and so, it's, it's worthwhile thinking about, but it's a big effort at the same time to.
Yeah.
Put the, the case together, and then to schedule the meetings to, with those donors, so.
Right, right.
So, there would likely be a separate committee that would, would need a forum to oversee it, and then we would need ambassadors, obviously, in the community as well.
Right, and so.
I was just gonna say, something that, um, we spoke about at length at the subcommittee meeting with some of the teachers, and, which was very helpful, and there's an occupational therapist also on the subcommittee, but, you know, it would bolster our case to the CPA, and if we have to stand up at town meeting to sort of really advocate for this, if we have shown that we've attempted to raise dollars from potentially some of the private schools, or some of the, if there's some bigger businesses in town who might get a tax write-off, I don't know how all that works, you maybe know, um, it would definitely bolster our case a little bit more, given all of the projects that are happening in town, that we've covered that, and it's not just like, we're funding the whole thing, you know?
Yeah, and I, and, you know, I also, there's gotta be some, I haven't found it yet, but there's gotta be some ADA money out there as well, you know? The fact that we're doing all this really, um, to meet those students' needs.
Yeah.
But, a lot of the, the, a lot of the grants have dried up, so, you know, keep, keep looking, and maybe, sometimes you look for a grant that's not through DESI for ADA accessible kind of thing, you look through somewhere else.
Like foundations, or like, uh, yeah.
That's my, that's my, my problem is that I, I go through DESI for everything, you know what I mean, that's the area I know, I don't know the area outside of that, so. Anyways, watching, you do know, please feel free to shoot me an email.
Sometimes the vendors for, like, the playground equipment can recommend grant, granters that they have seen or worked with.
It's good, it's a great idea.
You see that a lot with Steelcase, Steelcase, when you use their classroom furniture, if you call one of their reps, they can connect you with some, some leads for grants.
Right, right. It's a great idea.
There's nothing else on the playground? Our next topic is to point to the MASC delegate. So, the, uh, MASC conference in November, uh, contains the, um, delegate assembly, at which point delegates will vote on proposed, um, resolutions, um, with other members from, uh, around the state. Uh, so, we, as a committee, have to appoint a delegate. I am planning on attending the committee, that's right, the conference, Willis is planning on attending, I don't know if anyone else is going?
Thank you.
So it's Friday afternoon, I am planning on being there. So it's Friday afternoon. I am planning on being there. I've touched on it before and I do not mind taking it again unless you really wanted the opportunity. To be the delegate.
Can it be a joint effort?
No, there's one, one delegate from each committee.
Well, I will be there to support you if you are there and I will, I will learn from, from your experience.
Okay, if you, anyone can, you can come and sit in the back and watch if you wanted to.
Great.
Okay, so I will appoint myself as the delegate. And your packet includes text of the resolutions. As your delegate, I am voting on behalf of the committee. So if anyone hasn't approved that, this is your opportunity to share it.
We sponsor one. I just want to note that we are, our, our school is a sponsor along with Frontier Regional on.
Yep.
Rural school.
Yeah, number six. I'm trying to find it. We, we voted this during the joint meeting, I think. To sponsor this resolution. So the way the delegate assembly works, it's a lot like town meeting. Whoever's sponsoring each resolution gets up. Reads their, what they propose, speaks their case for it, and then anyone who wants to have, speaking about it for or against it or have questions, they get up and talk. And then everyone, one member from each committee votes. So it's very informative. There's the conversation to be very helpful. To be honest, going through, there have been times where I read the resolution and thought, I have no idea what this means. I don't know. I wouldn't know how to vote, but after hearing the conversation about it. I do feel like I have an opportunity to vote. All right, if there's no discussion there, we can move on. On the MCAS presentation.
It's a great time of night for an MCAS presentation. We're all warmed up.
We're having technical difficulties.
I'll start in.
Well, you know what, you know what we'll do is we'll run it straight out of this. And since you're presenting your faces, I feel like you'll be beyond it. So for some reason, it's just stopped working.
So we do an annual MCAS report and it's really interesting to prepare for. I like talking about it, but. I like to preface it by saying that we use so many different kinds of data to inform our teaching and our direction and Tina's principal report. Talked about the data meetings that happened at Deerfield and she named about, I don't know, ten other data sources that are important when we're looking at individuals, groups. Grades and whole school direction. So please keep that in mind. This is just a presentation on one data point and I always like to say that data does a better job of raising questions than answering questions. The MCAS actually should be seen in my mind as a living document. It tells a lot more over time than it does in one-year snapshots. Because we have, I think, a hundred and seventy-something students who took the test. And those students change. If we really want to learn about how we need to continue certain things to grow strengths or change things. We have to look at it over time. So the headlines from the state came from the interim commissioner. The interim commissioner. Held a meeting and, and these were the headlines and I, they don't necessarily parallel Deerfield, but. It helps to know the context. So statewide, MCAS scores from the spring show plateaued or declined in all major categories since the pandemic. This seems to have come as a surprise. Things were looking like they were rising a little bit and then they have dropped off again. I'll come back to some of the commissioner's narrative about that in a little while. The correlation between income and achievement is concerning statewide and that is true in our district as well. Student absenteeism remains a challenge across the board for recovery efforts. That's from the interim commissioner. That's not something that I'm bringing to about tonight, but I wanted you to know what the headlines were. So the overview at Deerfield is that a hundred and seventy-nine students participated, which is ninety-nine percent, which is great. In terms of our ability to review, review as many. The more people we have in our sample size, the more accurate it is. If we have students electing not to take it for all the good reasons that people would, might like to not take it. It could skew our feedback over time. So I'm glad that we have high participation. Those are third, fourth, fifth and sixth graders. Deerfield hovers around state average. Our accountability reading is moderate progress towards goals or towards targets and those targets are set through MCAS. It's not related to our school improvement plans, but we are up from last year according to MCAS. So forty-six percent accountability up from twenty-nine percent last year. So here are three snapshots showing how Deerfield and the state are compare. So for ELA, thirty-seven percent of Deerfield students. Are meeting and exceeding versus thirty-nine for the state. The way to look at these bar graphs is that blue is exceeding expectations and those are percentiles. And green is meeting expectations and the cutoff is a score of five hundred. So students in green and blue, thirty-seven percent scored five hundred or higher.
You were.
Yeah. Totally. In math, the green and blue for Deerfield is forty-nine percent meeting and exceeding expectations versus forty-one statewide. And in science, the overview, and this is just fifth grade, so it's a small sample size compared to the state, but fifty-five percent meeting and exceeding versus forty-five percent. And over time, our fifth grade has exceeded, has surpassed state averages around science. So part of what I get to demonstrate is how Open Architects, the tool that Tina mentioned earlier. Which we prioritized, I, I think it had been in conversation for a long time, but then equity audit really said to disaggregate the data. And get a better sense of how well you are serving all students in different subgroups. You really do need to have this kind of an engine and. So some of my slides will show you what I was able to learn fairly quickly. The scores only came out on September twenty-fourth. While the Deerfield ELA scores are slightly lower than the state average overall, if you disaggregate reading, language, essays and writing. In every grade level, DES is about state average in reading and language. So it's writing that is our relative weakness. In reading and language, seventy percent of fifth graders met and exceeded expectations. And in the categories of essays and writing. Girls performed higher than the state average. And I don't mean girls at Deerfield compared to girls in the state. I mean above the COVID average. And overall, thirty, while the boys performed lower than the state average in those two subcategories. And then looking at the overall ELA scores, thirty percent of boys were meeting and exceeding expectations versus forty-five percent of girls. So this deeper dive helps us look at a gender gap in terms of achievement and it also looks at domains of the ELA. It helps us focus on particular things. Reading and language scores have been higher than writing scores across the state since the pandemic. So that is also helpful to think about that it's, when we try to figure out what's the feedback, is it local, is it more generalized? A closer look at math and subcategories of math, there doesn't appear to be one particular area of strength over others. Some of the subcategories in math are geometry, measurement and data, numbers and base ten, algebraic thinking and operations, ratios and probability. But grade to grade, different subcategories were the higher achieving or the, or the relative weakness. And then we see that in math, forty-nine percent of girls are meeting and exceeding expectations versus forty-eight percent of boys, which is close enough not to be a significant disparity. We will be watching the next three years' worth of data on, because we have a new math curriculum that is being introduced this year. For pre-K through five, we're using bridges and in sixth grade illustrative math. It will take time for us to see the impact. Probably three years, I would say, until we are implementing it the way it is intended as we learn the program and. In the first year, the pace will not be as it will be three years from now when we're more fluent with the program and able to. Match our students because we know exactly what the resources offer and we can make more agile decisions. So I would expect us to have a plateau this year, but I would expect it to go up over three years. I was able to look at the growth of students with and without disabilities in our district as measured on MCAS. There's lots of ways to grow, of course. But the student growth percentile measures, how much did students improve their score compared to students who scored similarly to them last year? And also had disabilities in schools with similar settings. So a rural school with about two hundred students taking the test. So at Deerfield, forty-seven students out of a hundred and seventy-nine participating at MCAS for students with disabilities. And in ELA, the student growth percentile was fifty-four, not fifty-four students, so that is awkwardly written, but the growth percentile was fifty-four. And for students with disabilities and fifty-six for non-disabled students. And so that is. Good news that it's that close, that our students are achieving differently, but they are growing at a similar rate that we are serving both groups of students with equal growth measurement. And then in math, the student growth percentile for students with disabilities is forty-seven and fifty-two for non-disabled students. And again, it's relatively close, not as close as I would like, but still a ten-point spread is where it starts to seem significant. How small our numbers are and how our student groups change over time.
Is disability defined as IEP and 504 or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, so this is another type of graph that the Open Architect platform makes possible. So. Here are two pictures of how achievement is correlated with income and ELA and math. So this is ELA and that's math and. So. This is achievement. So over time, you can see that the income disparity after the pandemic, ah, sorry, Darius.
It's pressing, hold on.
This one? Okay, so the achievement was much closer before the pandemic. And then in ELA, the achievement dropped more precipitously for low-income students. And then has been following a similar trend, but not closing the gap since.
And that's the fifteenth, the fourteenth percentile of income.
Pardon me?
The, the lines are showing fifteenth and forty-fifth percentile of income.
Oh, oh, um, look, these are low-income scores and these are non-low-income scores. In ELA, and the years are twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four.
It's the fifteenth and forty-fifth.
Oh, this year, students were in the fifteenth, low-income students were in the fifteenth percentile in ELA and non-low-income were in the forty.
There's a thirty percent difference there.
Yes, yeah.
It's huge.
And in math, it's the twenty-seventh percentile achievement for students with low income and fifty-eighth percentile for students without low income in math. So here we have. Precipitous drops for both groups, but more of a precipitous drop for low income and then not the recovery we would want to see, not the closing of the gap. It's still lighter now than it was pre-pandemic.
It's a very helpful graph.
Yeah, I think that this tool is very helpful. Okay. And then this is another type of graph. And it made more sense to look at the correlation of race and achievement with this type of graph. Partly because there are multiple categories. It's not two lines, but every dot represents a student and. We don't always have enough students who are non-white to become statistically significant, but we can see patterns when we look at this type of plot. So while the average scaled score is not, is not dramatically different. The fact that there are high-achieving students who are white and not so many dots up here. Is something that I think we should pay attention to over time. And of course, these are individuals and there's not that many individuals. So you don't want to make generalizations about kids in particular, but if this were true for a long time, I mean, there's not that many dots up in this range either. But I would want to look at it over time. This is ELA and this is math. So we have just big white space here. That I would want to look at. So some takeaways that I want to offer is that, well, the big picture, there's a slight dip in ELA scores, a slight rise in math scores and high scores in science. That within ELA, reading scores are significantly higher than writing scores. That we have a significant achievement gap correlated with income levels and we have similar growth among students with and without disabilities. So some of the next steps we can take would be focus on closing achievement gaps among student subgroups. That has been a focus and will continue to be a focus for our district, but. Have some ideas about that. And then focus on improved writing outcomes. So some of, some very, what do you call it? Half-baked thoughts because this is in conversation right now. Could we be looking at a different model for summer support? One of the things that the commissioner said in his address was that. Because of the plateau and decline, he expected to see robust summer programs being offered to help close the gap. To offer to students who would regress if they didn't have the consistency of school instruct and academic instruction. But we have been offering. Robust programs in the summer for the last three years and there's been a lot of attrition from people, from students being interested in signing up or families being interested in signing up. My interpretation is that after the pandemic, there was some anxiety about being behind and that. Families were excited to put their kids in school for summer and kids were excited to see each other in summer, even school settings. But that's kind of tapered off and everybody's exhausted because. School is harder, the world is harder than it was before the pandemic and vacation is very much needed and playtime is very much needed. So we invited probably four times as many students to summer school programs than chose to attend. And we couldn't pull people in, the students in who we wanted to be, you know. Supporting. Also. It's really hard to ask teachers to come in in the summer now and teach. It's. It, it's school life, it's very important to take breaks and we're not seeing the same eagerness to teach summer school from highly qualified teachers that we used to. So. Staffing it is also more difficult. So I think that if we want to target some support for students who are at risk or. I think we should think about tutoring models or vacation camps or pairing robotics and writing, something that has more draw to it. And I don't know that offering three-week or four-week summer camps is the best model. This would be something that would be discussed by lots of different teams of people. So I'm just saying my idea, but this isn't something that anybody has agreed with me on or has weighed in on yet. It just felt like really work, a lot of work and a lot of money went into this summer school programs and for not that much of a turnout, but again, we could look at more data. We could look at some of the fall scores that we have and compare them to the spring scores for kids who went to summer school and see if it did make a difference. I haven't done that yet. So we might find out that it does make a difference. Another thing is that. I think that we should do a review of keyboarding and figure out where that fits into our school system and into our vision for students. And I don't know where that conversation will go. This is the year that our school reviews the digital literacy and computer science program. So. In a recent meeting with all of the library and media center teachers, we had the state expert, Melissa Zites, come and talk with us. About what she would recommend we focus on in terms of an instructional vision in that domain. And she did bring up keyboarding in second grade as something that she advocates for. You don't need to have little hands on big keyboards. Some of the programs support hunting and pecking, but just gaining fluency because kids are using digital tools anyway. So. Promoting some good habits and some knowledge about how to use the tool correctly is important and. It seems like when you look at the students' writing scores, this would take more of a data dive, but. More students are being recommended to use speech to text or to use keyboarding at early ages to accommodate executive function difficulties or dysgraphia. And of course, there are incredible benefits in handwriting. I'm not advocating for not doing handwriting. I'm just saying that I think it's the next question because. The students have to type their essays in third grade on MCAS and you get points for how long it is. So being able to sustain writing is part of it. MCAS would never drive our instructional decision, but it might point out to us that there's a level of frustration or not a level of fluency. So we would look at it. But we wouldn't let MCAS drive our curriculum. It would just say, well, what's going on here? Why is writing so much slower and why is it lower for boys? And what do we, what are the other correlations with that population? But we would want to do a full research and have a lot of teacher input into that kind of a thing. We have new curriculum in ELA in math. It, it will be, last year was the first year for. It, it will be, last year was the first year for ELA. And this is the first year for the new math program. And actually, there's even a part of the ELA curriculum that we staggered. So in some skills, this is the, this is the first year for ELA. Part of the reason both programs were chosen was for their um rigor and for their ability to um reach all students equally, to have culturally responsive, not just content, but the way that students are engaged in the classes, the way that teachers are encouraged to teach would be ideally um meeting all students and not privileging uh the learning style of the majority population or of a dominant learning style. That it would be more diverse, more universal design for learning. So we'll see how that works. And then I think that this data tool is really exciting and the, the data meetings at every level, grade levels and admin levels and instructional leadership teams to keep learning more about what we have just started to peel back thanks to this tool. Questions?
Yeah, at the beginning, you mentioned uh the scores had plateaued or dipped. Was that at the elementary level or?
Please say that again.
At the scores that have statewide plateaued or dipped, is that elementary level or high school as well?
State level, that was the state comment, not ours.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was statewide, all levels, yeah.
Okay. I was thinking the kids who were, I was wondering if it affected elementary schools more. Kids who took the ELAs last year were young elementary school kids in a pandemic. And I would imagine that they would struggle more to catch up rather than kids who had a few years of schooling under their belt or older.
It even happened in the high school levels, in eighth grade and tenth grade, yeah. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I really appreciate the breaking it out by student groups and being able to get information. It's helpful. She's this, my ideas. Room for focus, areas of focus. All right, uh, next up, we're talking about the donation. The, the men's Sunday basketball group.
That's you, Tina. You get the talk.
Okay, so we received a donation from the men's Sunday basketball group. Phil Hayes said that he collects um a few bucks every game from the men that play and he invested it and he ended up with ten thousand dollars. So he donated it to school and um he would like for us to kind of earmark it to support student recreational activities such as field trips or um PE-related activities and materials.
Or playgrounds?
Or playgrounds.
I mean, my major's class.
Well, or. Student recreation. Wow, that is a very generous donation.
A wonderful story. Super generous.
Is, what's the background of this, the men's basketball? Is it, do they play in?
They use our um gym on Sundays.
Yeah.
And I guess he's been doing it for years before I came aboard. And he said, well, I met with him and he said, um, we were gonna donate it, but um a couple of years ago, but then COVID hit and I've just been investing it. Yeah, thank you for doing that. Yeah, it was a surprise phone call, so that was a little, um, nice little gift.
Yeah, nice phone call.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, so do we have to uh accept the donation formally?
Yep.
Do I hear this word?
I believe so.
Okay. So would anyone like to make a motion to accept the gift of ten thousand dollars from the men's Sunday basketball group?
I'll make a motion to accept the ten thousand dollar donation from the men's Sunday basketball group to support activities such as field trips or PE-related activities and materials.
Great, thank you. Second by Danny. All right, all in favor of accepting the donation? One, motion passes by all. All right, thank you for that update, yeah. All right, reports. Uh, I have no report tonight. Collaborative.
So I forward everyone the executive summary from the collaborative. Um, I also attached what I thought was an interesting um piece that they, the collaborative put together. It lists all of the services the collaborative covered offers and how our district, I mean, all the districts in Franklin and Hampshire are utilizing the services and just kind of interesting to see what, what they might offer and how we can use them. So um if you have any questions or are looking for information, I have lots of other summaries from the collaborative I could forward you if you're interested.
So all of this information, right. Thank you. Superintendent's report.
I don't have a report. I just have an update that um there's always, throughout the last seven years, there's been whether or not the word vote is written after anything on our agenda. Means you have to vote on it. If it's not written there, do you have to, can you vote on that? Um, we got clarification from MASC that anything on your agenda, um, one can expect you to take action on it. So you don't actually have to write that, but we found another posting where they said we put votes maybe taken ahead of each section just to avoid any confusion. So just letting you know what the legal side is, if it's on your agenda, you can take action on it because that's the assumption. But we also added, as you can see on your new agenda, this time, votes may be taken for anything on each area. So um we're gonna add that because people, we're transitioning from having always rate, you know, vote taken. The only thing that would be different is if it's a first read, we've added, it's the first read, no vote.
Sounds reasonable.
Good.
All right. First action, Darius. Okay. There is nothing further that anyone else discussed? I would be looking for a motion to adjourn.
What's your opinion, Derek? Second.
All right, all in favor? Call the meeting, close meeting at eight fifty-seven.